Didn't think I had to. You're good, we're good, we're on? I guess we're on. Now, I already lost the agenda. Good evening, welcome to July 28th, 2022 Planning Board meeting. The first item on the agenda is all-purpose storage. We're LLC, 695 Congress Stage Road, tax map 403 lot 3-1, the commercial zone. I got an email from Steve Keach with some comments, early afternoon, late morning, and I got an immediate reply from Fieldstone saying they would like to be continued till August 11th. I believe that's the date, is that the right date? Okay. So if someone can make that motion, then we could get this out of the way.
Are you going to appoint anyone else to?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Just checking.
I'll appoint Danny Jean as a voting member, I'm sorry.
Make a motion to continue the Fieldstone application till August 11th?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, okay. Second item on the agenda is subdivision for Randall Dearborn on 247 Old Francis Town Road, tax map 411 lot 355 in the rural agricultural zone. Hi. Hi, how have you been?
Fantastic, and yourself?
Good, thank you. Let's see, let's see if we got a complete application here before we get into the whole thing. We can't spell topography on our checklist, too.
Worst case, it won't work.
We have a waiver request, I guess, for depicting all the wetlands?
Yeah, so it's a larger piece. The back portion is substantially wet, there's a few dry hummocks in it, but the area wasn't needed to capture the full, uh, capture the minimum lot size. So we just located the, the edge of wetland where it severed the rest of the, the dry land. In the top left corner, I guess, it says limit of delineated wetland. There's kind of a neck that comes in there, and that's... Yeah, everything back, exactly, yep. You can see in the, in the top left corner, there's a couple humps up there and such, that it's pretty insignificant to what we're doing here.
So that the application seems complete.
I'll make a motion, we accept the waiver.
I already forgot for 13 and 14, and 3 and 14 on the checklist.
Number 3 and 14 on the checklist with regards to mapping all the wetlands on the entire site.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I make the motion because first of all, let me explain why I'm doing this. The rules are about to change for us here at the end of August on any of our decisions. We, we have to write a letter of decision and justify our decision for everything.
Is that a town thing or a state thing?
State thing.
Really?
Yeah, really. So, I wanna I know, we'll probably have this done before then, but I just want to start it. So if we have to find two things as we go, at least we'll have something to start with. So I think we ought to say why I made the motion for the waiver, to approve the waiver. In the, in this instance, the plans demonstrate that they met the lot, minimum lot sizing required for upland soils without mapping all the wetland. So...
My thoughts exactly.
So that ought to be reflected on the minutes at some point somehow, too.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Okay, we got the waiver granted. And we need to accept the application as complete.
Well, anything else on the checklist is there, right? We've granted the waiver, so make a motion, we accept the application as complete.
Did you notify Tim Ferwarda?
I notified Meridian because they're the ones that did it, and I miswrote Ferwarda on the plan. Tom actually called me and said Craig's gonna pick up on this. So Meridian did the, the wetlands, and I've changed it to Meridian on the plan. I literally pulled out of the site and could see Tom Carr's house, and I went, he's the guy for the job. And then I forgot to put his name on the plan.
So did we notify Tom Carr or Ferwarda?
Yes.
Okay.
That's how he knew to call me and, and say, hey, Craig will catch that, and he was not wrong.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, we have...
I made the motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion, sorry about that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Okay. Mr. Higginson?
So, Dearborn Estate, looking to cut off a lot so that daughter can build a house, they're in the audience here. Existing house, existing leach field, construction approval. That house will maintain 5.58 acres with traditional road frontage. The other one's a back lot, 11.63 acres with the 50-foot minimum. They're gonna do a shared driveway, of which I have an easement here prepared by Rob Howard for. So there's no proposed change in curb cut or anything like that, they're gonna let you read that for a second. They're gonna, um, they're gonna share the driveway to access the, the rear lot.
We'll need a driveway agreement.
We'll need a, yeah, we need a shared driveway agreement for maintenance.
Yeah, in addition, yep.
Yeah, in addition to that, or with that, whichever way you want to look at it.
Both, both to be recorded.
Yes. Well, I'll bring it up since Bruce isn't gonna. Okay, it's my turn. The board decided that on a previous application, they had to get a variance for putting a driveway to maintain and reconstruct a driveway through the wetland buffer.
So when we were here having our preliminary discussion, there was no issues sought by you guys at that. We discussed all of the ins and outs of what this could be, and I was definitely guided to the fact that it was existing, it's been there for, it's long since predate zoning, so it's an existing situation.
I understand. The previous application had the same, the previous applicant had us, had the same situation.
Okay.
I was, I was not sitting on the board at that time.
So we have to go to the ZBA to get permission to impact a buffer that's already been impacted prior to...
Right.
Prior to their getting jurisdiction of it before we can move forward with this?
Actually, we, we, I thought of a better idea.
I like the way you're talking already.
Because I was the applicant on the other one.
Oh.
And I don't like, I, it's silly to go to the variance route, in my opinion.
Sure.
But the board decided that, so I'm doing it.
But in your case, you didn't, to be fair...
His grandfather doesn't.
You didn't have as much upland between where this culvert is.
I had...
But anyway, go ahead.
Anyway, it doesn't matter if I had just under 20 feet of upland between the two wetlands or not. Either way, it's plenty of room for a driveway, but that's beside the point. So my thought...
Even though we're not resurfacing or anything, not, literally nothing is changing.
Don't finish.
My thought was, we could do a site walk between now and August 11th, come back August 11th for the meeting, and take a look at that.
Okay, what exactly are we looking for?
To see if we got room to run what's down there now for driveway.
Without cutting trees and disturbing the wetland buffer.
Doing any more impact on the buffer?
Do you need a variance? That, that's the question.
I don't believe as though we do. But my eyes and your eyes could be conflicting.
I doubt that. Our eyes and their eyes may be conflicting.
Uh, you know, it's, it's, it's established, it's the I mean, the gravel paths gotta be 10 feet wide, if not 12, and then there's grass growing on the, on the side. It's, you know, it's substantially wide enough, but if we're gonna start talking about ladder trucks and all that stuff, I mean...
The board was talking about you need 12-foot wide travel widths.
12 feet and then 2 feet on each side, right?
We certainly, we have that, we have that all day long.
Are you gonna, are you gonna...
If you have that, and you're not gonna impact anymore, then...
Are you gonna need to bring in more stone to make the base better, structural base better? That type of thing?
Don't, don't have to, I mean, it's been used as is, I don't, you're not intending on, on doing any work to that driveway, are you, down through there?
No, I mean, maybe later on, maybe get on loose smoothing, might get a little...
If you do some smoothing later on, then we could go to the zoning board for permission to smooth our driveway?
Wouldn't feel bad if we went and took a look at it.
Okay.
Consistency is important. If we've done for one, we probably should do for another.
Yep. Always a difficult pill to swallow, and there's not a regulation that says something of this nature, and then you get hit by this at a meeting when you're thinking it was pretty cut and dry. But if that's what it is, then that's what it has to be.
Well, you actually, yeah, you got two choices, go for the variance, because it could apply for the variance between now and what, two weeks is the deadline to submit, roughly?
We're not gonna get, we're not gonna get a variance approved before August 11th, and you're not gonna approve this without a variance, so there's timing-wise...
But you can get the variance approved, and then you come back in September.
You need the first Tuesday of the month, right?
I'm thinking, I'm thinking about my hardship and what I would ask for in a variance, like, I don't, whatever. We'll do a site walk, and I think that you'll be...
Well, it's, it's an easy hardship, it's the only place to cross, to get through that, to that large upland soil.
Well, I was thinking more along the lines of, could I get a variance for something that's grandfathered and not really, I'm not sure if I need a variance for or not, because the planning board said they needed it? That's kind of where my mind is going.
That's what I wrote.
Whatever.
Anyway.
We'll, we'll, we'll schedule a site walk, and we'll look at it, and then we'll come back on the 11th.
Before we go walking away, was there anything else on here we want to talk about? Get 275 feet of frontage on the pavement? Do we want the soil calks on the plan?
No.
Lot, lot sizing calks on the plan? Well, he already has it, sort of.
I've got the, the minimum of 97,000, and then the contiguous upland of 125 and 112.
Yeah, you've got them right by any of the lots.
I see, I see that now.
And obviously, the contiguous areas are in the, on the rear portion for both lots.
Note number four. You say at the very end, prints as 50 feet for over five acres.
Lots over 10 acres.
Yes. Little typo. You got the driveway note, you got the wetland note. And obviously, you're gonna change the wetland certification thing.
Yep, yeah, I've already got that in here, it's Spencer Tate of Meridian. One question, the driveway easement, so right now Randall owns both lots, and they're gonna stay in his ownership for some time. So it's always been my understanding that you can't deed...
Give an easement to yourself?
You can't deed an easement to yourself, so is providing you the, the draft language sufficient?
You can declare an easement over the other property, though.
Okay, I'll get the attorney to look into that, so you can declare an easement over the other property, record that, and then when it gets transferred, then you just record it again.
The easement goes with it, because you already declared easement. You're declaring an easement over that property for...
Okay.
Yes, you can do that. Instead of granting an easement, you're declaring it. I don't understand it either, but attorneys do it every day.
Yeah, we'll just, we'll just make, we'll just make sure that, yeah.
Is he gonna write a separate deed for the, the other lot?
Not at this time.
Okay.
Unless you're gonna sell it, you don't need a deed, right?
Right, and it's current use now, and so on and so forth, and, you know, they might not build this year and next year, who knows? So they're not gonna, they're not gonna break it out just yet. It's always kind of a chicken and egg thing with easements and whatnot.
Does anybody from the public have any questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll close it for public comment. Anybody on the board have any more questions?
Want to schedule a site walk?
Absolutely.
We'll do it with the 10th, which is the day before the 11th?
It'll be fresh in our minds. You can see how awesome that driveway is.
Like, 6 o'clock?
Sure.
The 10th?
Yeah.
6 o'clock.
Okay.
6 o'clock on the 10th?
Craig's gonna have to reschedule his wiffle ball tournament.
No, I just mix three things, three days in a row, that's all.
Two in a week, it's a lot. Yeah. 247 Old Francis Town Road.
It's August 10th at 10 o'clock, or 6 o'clock, yes.
The shoulder's a little tight there, but there's plenty of room to park up in the driveway.
I noticed that this afternoon when I drove by. Any other questions or comments? Until the 11th, that's...
Then we'll continue this. No, August 11th, make a motion, we continue this. Motion for the meeting for August 11th?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Aye. See you on the, see you on the see you on the 10th. Second item on the agenda is Sean and Carol Hickey. I don't see Jacques. It's either Hickey's or Carrato, and they're both Jacques. Great. Uh-oh, we got a question? No? So no Jacques. Oh, you do have a question.
I'm not nearly as handsome, but I'll be taking the place of Jacques Belanger tonight.
Oh, okay, that explains why Jacques's not here.
Jacques Junior.
Yeah. In that case, the next item on the agenda is Sean and Carol Hickey owners Jacques Belanger surveying, 424 Reservoir Drive, map 404 lot 18, the rural agricultural zone. I guess you'd ask my question before we accept it's complete, shouldn't I? Can you tell me how much frontage lot 18's gonna have?
Uh, so the frontage on lot 18 is gonna come off of upper crani.
Okay.
406 feet.
So you're gonna need a variance for not accessing, you're gonna do a shared driveway off of that lot.
So, so...
I see, I see what you're doing now.
Excuse me, are we talking lot 404 or 401? Uh, map 401 or 404?
Map 401, lot 18.
Okay.
Will front off of upper crani to gain its, its minimum frontage requirement, but it will be accessed off of reservoir.
Okay. No, I lost the file, there it is.
So essentially, the existing driveway is going to be existing house will stay in place, and then it'll be branched off of to go to the new proposed lot.
Coming off reservoir?
There it is. Maybe this thing also appears.
This is reservoir, yeah?
Yeah.
It's coming off crane, it's going on crani.
See this lot here? 38 feet of frontage there?
So, yeah, so...
That's right, forgot about that, the wetlands.
So, uh, obviously, Michael Lambert passed away, so the new wetland scientist is... I'm not sure who it is, I heard his name, I know we got a guy working on it that's going to, to take care of it. But that's just something that's still in the works.
So of course, we gotta ask who was notified, but you probably don't know, do you?
Well, no, I mean, I'm getting it back, hello.
You sent it, you, you sent it to Mike Lambert, okay.
Yes, so I'm not sure, I don't, I have no, I'm not privy to how that's gonna work, if they're gonna certify his work, whoever the new wetland scientist is, is going to stamp and sign the plan, and is, I don't know, I guess he's not working under Mike, because that's not possible anymore, so I'm not exactly sure of the in and outs of that, kind of a, an unfortunate and unique situation.
Okay. I didn't see any waiver requests. To look at wetlands, it looks like wetlands are flagged for the whole site. Tipped on the whole site. So how do I want to handle this? That's the question, right? I was gonna make a motion that we accept the application as complete. But we have to get us sometime in the near future, we're gonna get another soil scientist note, wetland, sorry, yes, wetland stamp, certification and stamp. He's gonna have to get a certified letter as well. But I think we can do that in the future, since unfortunately, Mr. Lambert passed away. And it is a very unusual situation.
So, in, I mean, in theory, I don't know the legality of it, but in theory, as long as he's been noticed prior to...
The wetland scientist that did this wasn't notified, he hasn't received the notice yet, but we sent him the notice.
That's what I'm saying, so if...
But if somebody else is gonna stamp the plan by the RSI, he has to...
They need to be notified, so, but we can notify them
Later.
Later, prior to...
The next meeting, hopefully.
Yes. So we can still continue this meeting to...
If somebody seconded my motion.
Right, all in theory, all in theory.
Did you make a motion?
I did.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Discussion? You understand? Yeah? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Mr. Higginson?
Yeah.
Stepping in for Mr. Jacques, yes.
So, starting out at 55 acres, existing house, and splitting it into two 14.73 and 40.45. Both lots are over 5 acres, so there's no state subdivision approval. The wetlands on the southern half of the lots are delineated, the northern portion of the lot's not being affected, it was not delineated, again, Mike Lambert did it. Existing driveway that provides access to lot 18 is proposed for 18-1, we'll use the existing gravel driveway for 18. Yeah, we already talked about that, that just confused me. But we're gonna use the existing driveway for both lots, 18 and 18-1.
How much is the existing driveway? Because you, it shows this other Woods Road to the south, or whatever it is.
Yes, so...
It shows two ways to get from lot 18 to lot 18-1.
Well, I dare say it's going to be the first left, because that is all incorporated in the existing lot.
In which case, he needs a wetland permit.
And that is... Is he on our hand? Okay. Jacques did say that they, they were working on wetland permitting for it.
Okay.
So I believe that that's something that's still pending.
Now, you need a...
Then you need a variance for the wetland buffer.
Yep.
Obviously.
It would make the most sense to me that that lower Woods Road would be the one to use, because the upper one is right up by the house, and if you're sharing a driveway, that's not really, I don't think that's something that...
Wouldn't be...
Wouldn't be desirable for too many.
Wouldn't be desirable in my book, either.
Correct, so I think that it's a pretty fair assumption.
So we're gonna need an easement, easement depicted for the first part of that driveway?
And a maintenance agreement.
The maintenance agreement, yes. And a wetland permit and a variance for two places?
Yep.
If you're gonna go for variance, this one, you might as well go for variance on the first one, right?
Right.
Three?
Well, the existing, would you point it?
No, yeah, that's, that's fine. That's fine.
How long has the house been there?
So... As I, as I look at this. So, we've got an existing driveway that's got two small pockets of wetland, which would have a buffer to them.
Yeah, but that's why I asked how old that existing house was.
Did we not just determine that it doesn't matter how old the driveway is? It either needs a variance or a sidewalk?
No, well, no, in this existing driveway. The buffer, when did that get adopted?
So, the portion down below where it says gravel driveway is going to now be shared.
Right.
That's the same situation as the last application, where it's an existing driveway, but now it's going to be shared, and it is within the existing buffer, which is grandfathered.
Well, the existing part.
The existing driveway going to the existing house.
Right.
Is not the same as the previous application.
Oh, because it's new driveway going to new lot? Okay, so it's the only, the part of the driveway that changes is the new portion of it.
Right, the woods road type thing.
Really now? I got you. Yep, just two spots, not four?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because that existing driveway...
Yep, I got, no, I follow you.
Prebuffed.
Sure, yep.
Orders.
Got you. So, it has to be an existing driveway serving an existing house to not have to go and get a buffer.
Right.
For the variance. If it's an existing driveway servicing nothing that you now want to use to service a house, you need a variance.
Right.
Okay, that's...
Or a sidewalk.
Yep, that's...
Clear as mud.
Got you.
Yep.
So, if he's going to go for variances here, we don't need to do a sidewalk?
Nope. If he's going to go for two variances, we don't need to do a sidewalk.
Have you applied for the variance yet?
Negative.
So, there's no sense, we probably continue this till September sometime?
I believe the wetland permit has been applied for, the variance has not.
We're going to continue until a meeting in September, because that, the first meeting you could make would be the first Tuesday in September, I would imagine, for the variance.
Well, the, the status of the wetland crossing, I have no idea on, and that can take a little bit. So, provided that we, the next step would be go to the ZBA to get relief from the buffer. All in theory, pending the DES.
Right.
So, we could come back to here with the variance for the buffer, pending the DES, and continue on quite happily, yeah.
Right.
So, that would put us in September. So, we could hit the ZBA in August, and then come back here in September, yes.
You'll hit the first week of September.
So, we can, we can get to the ZBA prior to... The ZBA meeting is before your meeting. So, we could get that decision, and then come back to yours, so we could make it in, for September.
Right.
Right, the ZBA is September sixth, I believe. What do you mean? Forgot about a holiday, yeah.
So, our meeting would be the...
Our meeting's the eighth.
This one's our first meeting in September?
It would be before the ZBA.
Oh, because it's, first day's Thursday.
Right, right.
So, it would be the last?
So, we'd be, we'd be continuing on to the twenty-second. Those are the issues, I mean...
Actually, there's some numbering issues. So, if you look at, I know you picked a certain page. Just clean up the 171s. You can kind of plan. There's some places that say...
For the street address?
No.
On the front page, the first one, you said it's subdivided 401-18, and then it says lot 177. 177 is the next one.
Okay.
You just got to clean up the map and lot numbers. And it's on multiple pages. Just in the notes.
Yeah, I see it's page three.
No, I'm not the only one that does stuff like that.
And you know how on your plan, Dan, you had...
Yep.
Upper land area listed, and then you had the minimum land size.
Yep.
Required. I don't see that on here anywhere. I noticed that on the next application as well.
And the driveway note.
The town aware driveway note?
Yes.
I'll just give a copy of my driveway note. I like it. This list is bigger than mine. On the driveways?
Yeah, we go to change the sheet.
That's for driveways over a hundred or three hundred feet? I'll figure it out.
This is... This one far exceeds whatever it would be, anyway, so...
It exceeds all, you're right.
Yeah.
Any comments?
No.
Comments from the public?
About this specific?
About this application.
Correct.
Yes.
Do I stand, or...
Yes, come to the podium, state your name and address.
First name, Robert, last name, Downey, D O W N U I. The address is 428. I live next door. And I just had questions. I'm just curious about the... I'm confused, because I assumed that the, all of this process had been started, considering the massive amounts of development that have happened already. The wetlands that have been filled in, the, the culverts or ditches that have been made from the driveway itself. So, I'm a little surprised and confused as to the process of what's going on. And I was wondering also about the, what is the end result or end goal? I know I see two lots here. Is there a want or a need for three or four lots, which is what I was assuming, or I've been told? And then the driveway itself is on a really bad curve, so we're going to use this one driveway on one of the worst turns in, in Ware for multiple homes that are coming? Again, I, I'm in education. I don't know variances, or zoning, or any of this. I'm just, just asking questions, because I'm a little confused myself. And then, who is monitoring the, the development that's currently already taken place for the past about year and a half or so? I'm not quite sure what's, what's happening up there. But I do live next door. And there's some things happening. The wetlands are on the back of my property. There are some wetlands that have been filled.
Who's doing the filling?
Oh, I don't, I don't know the details. Again, I assume that everything was... I didn't realize that there hadn't been permits accepted or required until I got the come here. And I appreciate everybody inviting me here, but I didn't know that. I assumed it was done. I didn't think anything when there was logging back in 2016. I just assumed it was done. Because I'm not the one to try to check in on people. Doing stuff to your property, do it, as long as you're doing it right.
Well, the logging probably didn't, let's say, probably would not need a permit, because loggers have a pretty broad, what they can do in a wetland, what they can't do in a wetland. There are a lot of newborns.
Absolutely. I do know that there was a, there was a permit sought after in 2016 for the logging. And I, I just, I'm saying, when it was happening, I didn't assume, but I assumed everything was above the board. I didn't think to check in on anybody. We live in Ware for a reason, and that's to kind of leave each other alone.
As far as recent filling of the wetlands, I don't know anything about it, and we don't know about a wetland permit. So, if wetlands were filled recently, more than likely, it was not legal.
I would say within the last eight months, most likely. And there's been big culverts put in, or big drainage ditches around it. Some of my own wetlands on my back property have been disturbed a bit.
Maybe we should do a sidewalk.
Sidewalk. Ding ding.
Everybody seems to agree we should do a sidewalk.
Tony has been out there.
Okay.
Correct. He just recently, within the past thirty days...
We've got an application now. We're allowed on this property now, so...
Because he's been out there a couple of times to speak with him.
I assume that's still in our application, where it gives us rights to be on the property? Okay, okay.
Okay, I do believe that maybe even my property line might be in part of his driveway. I'm not too sure about that. I did see an orange pin that would directly line up with the pin on our back property. So, I'm just, and again, I'm only asking, because I'm confused. I really don't know. I've let everything happen without anything, because I don't do what you want to on your own land.
I don't know the answer to your question, but we will find out. How's that?
Absolutely excellent. And then it sounds like it's being continued until August...
September twenty-second.
Got it, perfect.
But we'll probably have a sidewalk before that.
We will.
Is it possible to do the site work, sidewalk, the same day we do the, going up to Randy Dibbins? We can do them back to back?
They're not too far apart from each other.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see why not. Well, if we're at one o'clock at six o'clock, it'll get dark until eight.
Randy's won't take long.
Oh, it's the day before.
Yes.
I was thinking six o'clock, we're meeting at seven.
No, 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 yeah.
Randy's...
Randy shouldn't be a problem.
It shouldn't be that long.
Well, before we schedule a sidewalk, do you have any other questions?
Nope, that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Get him, get him to sit down again. Anybody else have any questions, comments? Seeing nothing, we'll close the republic comment. So, I think we need to do a sidewalk. We want to do it on the same day.
May as well.
Yeah, why not?
Okay.
Do you think we need more time? I mean, we can start earlier, if you're available.
It's quite a long drive and circle, and up and around into the woods, almost over to Upper Cranny, so you might want to be yourself.
I'm just thinking you might want an extra hour. Make sure you're in and out of there before dark.
It's not going to take long at the other one.
No. Something...
I assume we'll be able to drive in and park and walk back the driveway.
Absolutely.
Let's see where we are. You're talking walking probably three hundred feet at the most?
We'll be there for more than fifteen minutes.
Right. I don't think you're going to have any issues with what you see out there.
Yeah.
So, we can do this one at like six-thirty.
Yeah.
Right. That's right. We'll be able to do both up in one night, I think. So, let's just do the back to back to back. Do this one at six-thirty then.
Okay.
Makes sense?
Yeah, makes sense, no? Yes.
I'm going to park it at Upper Cranny Road, like I did last night.
Yeah, pack up, yeah, get off the reservoir drive.
Yep. It is, I agree. Right at the intersection.
Oh, 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 yeah.
That's where I parked.
More than enough parking on that driveway, right next, next one down, 428.
I think there's room.
August tenth.
At six-thirty, roughly.
There is room for three or four cars at Upper Cranny, at the intersection of Upper Cranny.
Graveyard's right there, too. You can park along.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're just starting to realize where the truck is.
Oh, yeah, it is, yes.
And then if you get hit on the corner, you always got the graveyard right there that can just take you.
I was there, I was there last night after the other sidewalk. Okay, so we have a sidewalk at six-thirty-ish. And, did you make a motion to continue or not? Did anybody?
Not yet.
Danny G.?
I'll make a motion to, I'm sorry, do you have a...
Would you, would it be, who can also visit the boy who wants?
Yeah, I've got that on my...
For September, certainly.
Yep.
Make a motion that we continue subdivision application for 424 Reservoir Drive, tax map 401 dash 18, until September twenty-second. Yes?
Yes.
Until when?
September twenty-second. I broke down someone's...
I got twenty-eighth, for some reason. I might be in July, hang on. Yeah, I am, okay.
There you go.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? We'll see you Jacques on the tenth, maybe.
You'll have to reschedule Wiffle Ball if it's a problem.
Three, 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 three longer nights.
You'll see me on the first one.
Okay. Next application's subdivision for Thomas Corrato? Is that pronounced that right? One eleven South Stark Highway, tax map 403, lot 177, Zone Rural Agricultural. And the plan is to subdivide into three lots. I don't remember seeing anything missing in this one either.
Where is this?
This is on Sugar Hill. Sugar Hills, huh? Off seventy-seven, just below...
Just before Lucy Drive.
Just you dip down.
Okay.
Just after the ice cream.
It's not South Stark Highway. It's South Stark Highway out there?
No, it's Sugar Hill.
Yeah, it says right here, one eleven South Stark Highway, tax map 431-77. What am I looking at?
Yeah, that's what I said, too.
Oh, and a public notice?
Well, address?
I don't see anything that says Sugar Hill Road on our agenda. I have the plan in front of me.
So, I messed up completely.
I, we'll just call it a typo. I like, I like typo. It's a way better term.
So, it's actually Sugar Hill Road. Maybe two or three, actually, even.
We can do that if you want.
No.
No.
Is there room in the budget for more employees?
No.
Is this person here?
I do not believe the lawyer applicant is here.
What's the application say?
Why don't you check that? That's a good idea.
The public notice says the wrong street. So, I'm sure the Butters notice has the wrong street.
So, the Butters don't have the...
No, does the Butters notice have the wrong street?
Correct.
Does say Stark Highway North, which is probably why the Charlene, I'm sure.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah. Would have been here, huh? Yeah, so the notice is wrong.
The notice is wrong. We can't go forward. Or just can I scroll? No. The legal notifications haven't been made, right?
They got certified mail, but it said it was for something across town.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm not sure Charlene picked it up, so...
I don't think we could hear it.
Could we pregame it unofficially?
No.
No.
It'll be...
So, I'll send out new notices for August.
August tenth?
No, no.
Twenty-fifth?
No, I don't have time to do.
Yeah.
August twenty-fifth?
So, we're looking at September?
August twenty-fifth.
Oh, okay, okay. Oh, right. I'm thinking it's already August, I'm sorry.
Close enough.
Winter's coming.
Yeah, you got some, get your t-shirts ready, I see.
What's that?
You're getting your t-shirts ready.
Oh, yeah. That's right, she knew what that was.
All right.
Sorry, folks. You get new notices with the right address on it.
The right address.
We'll try again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry everyone, rain.
See, I was raining.
Yeah, we'll try.
Good luck. This is, I'm sure, so I'll have to hang on for Bill. Oh, that's good.
Yeah, that made a little easier.
Blue sky showing I can post.
We should find the minutes, right? Throw it out to Rainey and do the minutes.
We, uh, our mics are all still hot, we're still on, right?
Just hang off for a minute though, I'll be right with you.
Just letting you know the mics are hot, so...
Be right with them, we've got minutes to do.
Yeah.
No, you didn't get any?
No, we didn't get any.
I figured, I assumed you were in that big pile over there.
No.
So we don't have any minutes?
No, I want to talk to you.
We're just about done, we just have to go through the formality. So make a motion to...
Is there any way I can get a copy of the minutes fairly quickly for a certain application a couple of weeks ago? So I know what corrections to make to my plan?
Oh, you're, um...
Dow, yeah.
And that was...
Is that...
Was that one July?
Was, is that going to be correct though?
No, he's looking for the minutes, I don't have time to do the minutes.
Oh, but I mean...
I did sixteen seven minutes on my vacation.
I know. But is that going to be, are you asking for the minutes when we discuss the...
No, he's the...
No, when I was, when I was presenting the application.
Okay.
Yeah, not what you're thinking about.
No, no. I believe it was the fourteenth.
Right, I think it was the fourteenth. I can do those first.
Okay. If you could, that'd be...
I can do this weekend.
That'd be appreciated, just to make sure I didn't skip anything. Any other business?
I make a motion we adjourn.
Jeez.
Second.
All right then.
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor, aye, aye, aye.